Alright, everyone. We have everybody present, so I will call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We'll start off with a moment of silence. Right, we're all standing to. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're all happy Monday. And to the Senator Nino, do you take your microphone, please?
Number four here. Reed Jackson here. Lawler here. Linell here. Williamson here. And Ms. Snyder.
Here.
So, we do have, I'm sorry. So, do I have a motion, your curfew agenda for this evening?
So, support.
Thank you, we're just resolving some technical issues. How would I do it from here?
Well, she can't make that series, she can talk. They should be up there if she's on a.
Why, I mean, from Star.
Yeah.
Senator Nino, take her off, calling approval of the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
No, I was, I was making the finish up.
And Elizabeth Clark.
Yes.
Reed. Jackson.
Yeah.
Lawler.
Yes.
Linell.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Ms. Snyder.
Yes. So, this evening, we do have Elizabeth Carey here with us to give us information and updates on West Star Commonwealth, the tech services that they are providing. So, we are trying to get this uploaded so that everyone can see in here. Oh, I remember, that's not here, okay. What do you call? Hi, Elizabeth, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Am I coming through okay?
Um, volume's a little low.
I can try speaking again and see if you can hear me any better.
Chief, is there an adjustment for us? So, I will turn the phone over to you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you as City Manager Snyder. And well, greetings to all of the City Council members. Thank you so much for inviting us this evening. I'm Elizabeth Carey. I'm the President and CEO at Star Commonwealth. I am joined today by Luisiana Perez, who is the Public Information Officer for the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. I'm actually gonna turn the bulk of this presentation over to her. And I believe she has screen slides that she's gonna share through the screen. The Department of Health and Human Services is the main provider of services at Star Commonwealth's campus right now. And so, they really are the ones that can speak to what's happening and what we're doing. And then, I can answer any questions that may pertain to Star. And she can answer all the questions related to the program. So, thank you for inviting us. And I will turn this over to Luisiana.
Thank you. Mayor and Council members. I'm very happy, I think you can hear me well, correct?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, thank you. So, my name is Luisiana Perez, HHS Press Secretary. And I'm the Public Information Officer for the mission here in Star Commonwealth. So, I'm gonna start sharing my screen. Before I go through that, I just wanted to give you a little of the numbers that we have right now at Star, just to give you the census and where are we right now. Currently, there are 191 kids in Star. We had two groups that arrived last Sunday, not yesterday, last Sunday. We had, the first group was 95 kids. On Monday night, we had another 95 kids arriving. And one kid arrived during the week. So, right now, we have 191 kids. We haven't received any more. And we are not expecting kids in the meantime. So, let me go screen share. Okay. So, I wanna talk a little bit more about our Unaccompanied Children Program. The Unaccompanied Children Program started with the Florida Settlement Agreement that obligates the government to release children without unnecessary delay to parents and adult relatives, as well as licensed programs willing to accept custody. This program is under the Health and Human Services Department, specifically under the Agency for Children and Families. The Office of Refugee Resettlement is the one that is in charge of providing the care for the kids that arrive without company to the United States. Under the Homeland Security Act of 2002, we have the definition of an unaccompanied child. It's any child under the age of 18 that has no lawful immigration status in the U.S. and that enters the country without a parent or a legal guardian in the U.S. These kids are referred to us from the Customs and Border Patrol facilities. So, let me explain a little bit on the process for these children. So, a children arrives to, a child, excuse me, a child arrives to the border. And there, he's encountered by the Customs and Border Patrol. Once there, the kids is taken to CBP facilities where they stay for the initial background check and for the initial check under U.S. law. The kids are not supposed to stay on CBP facility more than 72 hours. Because under the Flores Agreement, then they need to be transferred to an HHS facility. Because HHS facilities provide the kids with the services that they need. CBP facilities don't have the services that any kid needs. So, once they go through the CBP facility, they are referred to HHS for care. So, that's when we take care of the kids in any of the facilities across the country. This is a little bit of the age county and where the kids are coming from. This is not up to date. The demographics are kind of similar. But, of course, this year, we have a little bit of difference on the kids that are writing. So, the UC program, what we do is that we offer care and custody of unaccompanied children. That means we provide shelter, food, clothing, and services. We make the placement of the children in one of our facilities. And then, we take the decision to transfer them to a sponsor or sometimes to more established ORR shelter. Our main goal as the Office of Refugee Resettlement is to reunify the children with their family members or sponsors here in the U.S. What we want is the kids to be with their families while they wait for the immigration proceedings. So, the services that we provide, and this is kind of an example of what we provide in our established shelters. This is not the same services for places like Star, which I will go and explain a little bit more later. What we offer in our shelters are culturally relevant case management. So, kids are provided with a case manager that would help them with the reunification services, will help them to connect with their families, would understand what's the situation for the kid, what the kid went through before getting here, what's the process to release the children to a sponsor. We also have classroom education. That the education component is not happening at this moment at Star because this is an emergency site. But, we do have the recreation and physical activity for the kids during the day. And the way that that works is that during the day, they have a schedule for each of the activities, including when they get their meals, when they get to, like, the time they sleep, the time they do to, like, take showers, etc. We also provide medical and mental health services. Here in Star, we are very lucky to have a space where there's that clinic. And we are using the facility. So, we brought the medical chief. We brought our nurses, physicians that are part of our federal employees. And they are the ones providing all the medical help that the kids require. We're also, of course, making sure that the kids are interacting with their other kids. They are feeling safe. Because for us, the most important part is that the kids feel that they are safe while they are on care. So, this is a little bit of the information on what's the kind of, like, the placement and the level of setting that we have. What we have here is a shelter care. So, it's in the best interest of the child. And they remain here until they are reunited with their family members or sponsors in the U.S. or until they have a designation into the URM program or receive of immigration relief or any voluntary repatriation or removal to country of origin. So, ORR has more than 200 state licensed care provided in 22 states. These places specialize in child welfare and trauma-informed care. So, these state licensed providers are those established providers I was mentioning before. So, kids, kids come sometimes from these emergency sites. And we transfer them to a state licensed care if they need to, if they haven't reunited with the sponsors yet or if they need any other services that we cannot provide in the emergency intake sites. So, if looks their facilities, it's one, another level of facilities. This one is in a specific Caruso Springs in Texas. We recently opened it, well, recently in February. And this is, the reason to open this facility was to start decompressing the border. As many of you know, we have received a large influx of children coming to the U.S. And with opening these facilities, what we are doing is that we know that kids cannot stay more than 72 hours on their, on a CBP facility. So, we are trying to alleviate that and take the kids to an HHS facility in order to make sure that the kids have the services that they need. Sorry, this, just wanna go, not wanna make this too long. So, I, Star, as the way that it is right now, Star is an emergency intake site. That means it's a temporary measure in a temporary facility for, to alleviate the numbers that we have at the border. This is not a permanent solution. What we are doing here is that we are making sure that kids have a space for them, a safest space. And from here, they will go to, to be released to a sponsor, to a family member. Ideally, the kids will be here for a few days. 80% of the children that arrive to the United States on a, without a company, they have a member of their family here in the U.S. So, that's how, we work very close with agencies to make sure that we are doing the background checks, that we are working with the, closely with the kid to identify that sponsor. We also work with the consulate to make sure that the information the kids are providing is correct when they bring up our certificates. So, we make sure that the information is accurate. So, we can do a safely release of the children to their parents or to any relative or any better sponsor. So, of course, the COVID-19 has had an impact in our program. We, when the COVID-19 pandemic started, we reduced the capacity of our bed to 40%. Currently, we are operating in full capacity with the recommendation of CDC. So, as for you to know, every single of our sites, whether it's an emergency side, an influx take facility, we have CDC staff permanent advising us about COVID guidelines. So, for us, the safety of our, of the children and of our staff is a priority, as well as to making sure that we are not impacting any of the communities where we are being welcomed. So, here, on March 5th, we, at the CDC, issued the guidance regarding the reactivation of the care providers. And in that guidance, we had every single thing that we need to know in order to operate safely in any of our shelters. I know there are questions sometimes about how is the COVID protocol. So, it is, right now, for Star, what we're doing is that staff and the children are being tested every three days to make sure that we are controlling any outbreak. We haven't had any outbreak, outbreaks. Things are actually going very well here in this site. And for reference, and for background, when we, the kids are being tested before they arrive to this facility. So, they are tested at CBP facilities. Once they get here, they get tested again. And if there are any COVID cases, we separate them to make sure that there's not a spread of the virus. And that's, so, maybe this is stuff, please. I don't know how to do that. Here we go. Sorry about that. So, we are very, I think Albion City actually have been a great partner in this, in this, this mission. I've been in different locations across the country, like, at different emergency intake sites. And this has been a great place to be. I think Star has also been a great, great partner. And so, I kinda wanna make the, and I know Elizabeth is gonna talk a little bit more about Star and the facility. So, the way that it works is that HHS uses the facility. So, Star provides the shelter. But, in terms of childcare and anything related to the kids that is under HHS. We have in our staff here, members of different agencies working with the children. So, we have what we call volunteers, but these are not like regular volunteers. These are federal employees who have put their time to come to this emergency intake site to care for the children or to provide any services, whether it's IT, transportation, meal delivery, childcare, etc. So, we are like, we don't wanna be an impact to any community. We want to make sure that we are a good neighbor for the community. So, for us, it's super important to be transparent about like what we are offering, what we have here, where our resources are coming from. And I think with Albion, it's been a great experience. And we really appreciate being, being here in this community. So, now, I'll pass it to Elizabeth. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And you can see why she gets to do that part of the presentation because she knows it and the detail of it so well and has been working in this field for quite a while. So, at Star, we were contacted about three weeks ago by Health and Human Services, who happened to be aware that we had space at our campus to ask if we would be willing to let them use our facilities. So, the agreement we have in place is for the federal government and all of the staff that that requires. Luisiana just said it, but there's probably eight or nine different divisions of federal agencies that are currently on Star's campus, ensuring that all of the program aspects for the kids are in place. And so, what Star is responsible for is maintaining our beautiful campus and our buildings. We're also making sure that we can provide the meals, the laundry, the cleaning, and the clothing as students arrive. So, we're really providing ancillary services to allow the federal divisions to be able to deliver the direct care to the children and families on our campus. For those of you who know us, you know we have about 350 acres on that beautiful campus just outside of town. And it's got over 30 buildings on the campus. And that includes 17 houses or living units where the children are actually staying. So, at the moment, as Luisiana said, there's 191 children there. We have bed capacity for a little more than that. But, it's been nice to have not every single bed filled because it allows for the quarantining that might be necessary for any child who is exhibiting any symptoms of an infection or is positive. So, there are two units on our campus that are for quarantining. So, it's been nice to have about 190 students to allow for that spacing that's necessary. Again, as Luisiana said, this is an emergency request and very temporary. So, first, our Commonwealth, we will deliver the supports that are necessary for as long as the Department of Health and Human Services needs this emergency shelter. And hopefully, in the future, we won't have the kind of influx and need for decompression at the border for children. At this point, maybe what we should just do is open this up to the City Council members and allow you to ask any questions we did not cover.
Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You said this is just a temporary facility. So, how long is temporary for, or, you know, do you have like a general idea? I know it's just getting started. But, you have like a general idea or a timeline that should be taking everyone through to make sure, you know, they readjust it back to society?
Sorry, yeah. So, the, we don't have a timeline on how long will the mission be? We will be using this shelter as long as it's needed. We, so, the way that we, the time for the kids to be reunited with their sponsors, right? Yeah, it's, it goes from five days to 10 days. So, we are very lucky to know that kids here in this facility, actually, we have successfully reached out to their sponsors. And we have case managers. We have six case managers working here in this facility directly with the kids in order to expedite a safety, a safe release. So, yes, it depends on the cases. The children would stay five to 10 days, depending on the case. But, that's kind of like the timeline for kids to reunite with their families.
Okay, thank you. Absolutely.
So, I was interested, actually, in the, the kind of ancillary services. Elizabeth, you had mentioned you guys taking care of food and clothing. And obviously, it made sense. I mean, it seems like this is a rental arrangement with HHS. They're using your facility, probably compensating for that. Is Star anticipating any philanthropic need? Or are you being compensated enough to take care of the food and clothing, etc.? I was just, I know that a lot of people are wondering because there are a lot of people who hear, you know, children in cabins out at Star. What do they need? They're coming here with nothing. I just wanna know what the terms of your arrangement were. And if you guys were being compensated to be able to provide those things for those kids?
Perfect question. Thank you. Actually, we have been just overwhelmed with joy about the outpouring of support we've received since this announcement came out about 10 days ago. Lots and lots of people and organizations and groups that have reached out to say, how can we help? The, currently, Star is working on building an Amazon wishlist that we will put on our website as soon as we get that accomplished. Because there are things that I am sure a local community would like to be able to provide that are above and beyond the basics for kids. And some examples that people have been wanting to contribute are things like soccer balls and nets and a variety of other recreational activities. We also received in those first, that first week when those first large numbers of kids arrived, this happened so quickly that we did not have time to set up a clothing vendor. And so, generous, generous community members provided some gently-used clothing that we were able to use for those first rounds of kids. In the future, though, we are going to be able to be compensated to purchase all the clothing that they need. But, there will be other, we wish we had for the children items. And I hope within the next week or so, we'll have an Amazon wishlist up for community members or anyone who would like to support what's happening with the children at Star.
And I just wanted to add on that. So, we, HHS and the Office of Refugee Resettlement, we don't accept donations directly. But, what we do is that we encourage people to go to Star organization, local organizations, that would need like all this help. So, we are like very grateful to have Star that are putting a system together to receive the outpouring donations we receive.
I.
I think it was going to be on Star website. Oh, okay. So, Elizabeth, will this Amazon wishlist will be on the Star website?
As soon as we get it done, it will be. We have, we're right now collecting all of the ideas that people have. It's only been a few days. And so, and we've never done this before with this age group, our population of children. So, we're in the midst of building it. And when it's done, it will be on the website.
Yes, Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you. So, you said you have over 100 plus students. After, or children, after this transition of children, do you plan to have another group come in instead of the plans? Or is this the one?
So, it depends on the number of kids that we receive. But, it's, if the beds are clear, we will be receiving more children, but probably in less quantities than the first two batches of children that we receive. So, as soon as like the bits are opening, yes. Because our main purpose here is to make sure that the kids are not in a CBP facility, but that they are here in a nice place and they feel safe and they can do all the things that a kid would do in the right place.
So, just to elaborate on that, if, because the numbers of children arriving across the border continue to be at a high pace, which they are right now, as these children are united with families, which could be, as she mentioned, five. as these children are united with families, which could be, as she mentioned, five days or 10 days, as those beds open, the Office of Refugee Resettlement and Health and Human Services will determine to send more children to, to the STAR Commonwealth Campus so that we can keep it as an available space for children over time.
Councilwoman.
So I know, I know we're asking the question, well, cannot quite answer, so I acknowledge this upfront, but like, and people are saying, you know, how long this situation is going to exist? Is the agreement between STAR and HHS, is it like six months, then re-up is the year? And then re-up like, is there timeframes that we should look to say, well, within six months, no kids are out there, then clearly things are done? Is there a way for us to know what timelines you all are working with? It sounds like indefinitely or until the crisis calms down at the border. But I guess what are the terms of your arrangement?
Okay, she hasn't unmuted. So what we signed with Health and Human Services is under an emergency order and is only up to one year. So it could be days and there'd be no more children and we would have no more services to provide, but the letter agreement that we currently have is up to one year. I also wanted to just state, I did see it in the questions and answers. Just as a reminder to everyone, the STAR Commonwealth Campus is not located in the city of Albion, although our mailing address is Albion, we are in Sheridan Township. And so if there was any question about that at all, we are located in Sheridan Township.
Any other questions for our presenters? Good. Awesome. Well, thank you ladies so much for providing this information. We appreciate you giving your time on your busy day and evening. So hopefully all goes well and we'll definitely stay in touch if more need or eyes for more information.
Thank you so much for having us. I love the, the interest and support that we're receiving. And I was just going to say that if it does snow on Tuesday night, the children on our campus have never seen snow. They come from Central America. And we have gathered sleds just in case so that anybody who knows our campus, we have a great sledding hill behind Mendelson Hall and we're hopeful that the kids are going to be able to sled on Wednesday morning. So fingers crossed that they get enough snow for that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Right, Miss Johnson, do we have anybody for public comments pertaining to the agenda items?
I'm not seeing any handbrings at this time.
Okay. No need for closed session? So in our packets, we all have the minutes for study sessions from March 31st, April 5th, and April 14th, along with the minutes for regular council meeting on April 5th. Do I, oh, also in that is the rule for the copy distribution? So do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Well, Congress, city councilor?
Congresswoman Clark?
Yes.
Reed? Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the reservation to authorize a temporary modification to allow the city of Albion to report some pay, public related wages for surrender to the city's merge defined benefit?
So.
City manager tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm going to carry Zach for a lot for eight hours of emergency treatment. The city has agreed to continue with that emergency treatment since we are still navigating our way through the COVID pandemic. This would just allow us to, so anyone who is off due to COVID, we are able to report those wages as time served. So we're just recommending that this is approved. This temporary modification is approved. Yes, Mayor, for Congress.
But you said it, this is our minimum, let's say, four.
No, it has not been approved. This is up for approval.
So what do we cost? Does the city?
No, it just allows us to, for any, any employee who is enrolled in the defined benefit that they're off due to COVID, we're able to count those wages as time served.
Okay.
Any other questions? City councilor?
Congresswoman Reed? Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the reservation, to approve the purchase of one police vehicle?
So.
City attorney, any progress?
So this is for the purchase of one police vehicle that over the course of three years of $22,000 a year. My understanding is being with the chief, that is, the vehicle be completely outfitted with all the required equipment that is needed on our police vehicles. The reason it's before council for approval is because the amount exceeds $5,000. Any specific questions about the equipment? Is your chief thinking?
Chief Kip, any more?
We've been on a rotation basis of buying a new patrol vehicle a year. It's just a continuation of that.
Okay. Any, yes, Mayor, for Congress.
Yes, the question I have, well, you said this is our, we've been on a continuous basis of wearing tear and all that stuff, right? So is there any grant anything?
Not currently. We, we have granted almost on a yearly basis from I can't even grant more, but we, we got a $2,000 clause from them and it's a $2,017 from them. So that's kind of the gap when they, they give us the grant money. So we have not gotten any grant for this vehicle.
So something like every two years, something like we did one in 2019?
About.
Every five years?
Yeah. United States Department of Energy, it gives us the grant.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Kip? Yes, the, so that seems like a really high amount. That's a full mouth for a vehicle being upgraded?
So the price of cars have gone up dramatically over the last few years. We were paying, the last two years we bought Chevy or the Dodge Charger, they were running about $26,000 last time I got a Charger. And then equipment, it's about $50,000, $5,000. And some of this is because our equipment's being sold old in the cars. We kind of buy new radios for the cars. Radios are about $6,000. The computers, they're all about $4,000. Our video equipment is very old. We need to replace that. That's included in this price as well, which is about $28,000 or $20,000. And so this year, the Ford explorers that we were buying have gone from $28,000 when I bought the last one, to $37,000 a year now, or $37,000. So we decided to actually go with a super rated Ford pickup truck, which is $34,000 base price. And then the rest is the equipment cost of adding in plus the equipment for the vehicle that we need.
So if I understand you correctly, with that equipment, it could be transferred if it was up to date?
The problem is most of our cars, they run on rotation basis. We have six patrol cars plus a patrol car line car. We're on a rotation for about eight cars. So by the time you rotate these cars out, they're eight years old. Those models have changed. And so that equipment is a significant part for those cars. Plus it's eight years old and it's pretty much been through its life cycle.
My last question. You mentioned this is happening at the year of the week. How, did that, did that come end point or is that just?
No, it's basically continued. It's, we replace one car a year. They last about eight years for the car.
And it's eight years?
Then we're getting rid of that vehicle and we're adding a vehicle to it. Our insurance company requires that when the cars have 120,000 miles, that be no longer using for pursuit purposes or patrol. And so that's about the status of those cars. We put, we give out a $30,000 a year on a car just doing patrol. You just remember that one point, they seven to three, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? And Chief Kip, this comes out of one of your lines of express?
Yeah, this is already in the budget. The biggest reason to ask for this is that we're asking for the same budget, why not next year? If you're asking for your, it's on the car, we'll be on it.
All right. Any other, any other questions?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed? Anderson?
Yes.
Motion to approve the reservation for the purchase of the DC screen, compost screen?
Support.
Mr. Miller, do you want to go with some information on this?
Yep. So basically, the state of Michigan Eagle didn't like the way we were doing or we were handling a tree dump area. And they required us to temporarily shut down the bias area. So speaking with Eagle, I've had to set up a way where we can continue the use of that through composting. In order to do so, we have to have a screen to screen to make compost. So basically, I put together four different quotes. This quote came back at 14:09. It's a local product. It's actually built here in Albion, a jet water jet facility. It's a very nice unit. So with this, we can screen leaves and we can screen our street millions and we can screen waste there from the water department. I think it can save runway in the long run and it's something that the state's going to require us to do.
Any questions for council? Mayor, for Congress?
Yes, you talked about the size in here. You said that you thought this was the best size? Are you going to need a bigger size or a smaller size?
So we really don't know exactly how far this program is going to go. Right now, I'm just kind of starting off really small. They, this is one of the smaller units I've actually found. It's portable. We can take it to job to job. So we can go on the tree dump for leaves, go up to the street department for sweeping, and go to the water department for their waste dirt. I think that's going to be best for us right now. In the future, if the state comes in and says they don't like what we're doing, even though we set it up properly because of the watershed, we still have that screen to do the other things besides the compost there. Maybe we can move the compost to the street department instead of the new site. So I think for the time being, this is going to be the screen for us for the next several years, more than that's left.
Okay. So you said water jet was the?
Yeah, industrial park, get a water jet place.
Okay.
And actually, they're right out front. Everybody wants to go look at it.
No, I just wanted to know what place it was that you asked it because it said EGLP. And I guess there were a couple of EGLP.
That's, that's the Eagle. That's the state of Michigan.
That's how they say it? Okay, about the A?
No, that's the.
The Eagle is the state department that, environmental?
Yeah. It was the D.
Yeah, it was, it was the apartment, environmental quality. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mayor. What do we, what do we use the compost for?
So we can use the compost. It makes tapsoil. So we use tapsoil all around the city. We use it in cemetery, we use it for stumps, we use it for water dig, we use it for everything. So right now, we buy tapsoil. It's costly. We have to haul it from our brothers. So I believe that we can, I really believe that we can make enough tapsoil where we wouldn't have to burn shit.
So what you said going in here is what you, what the city uses is not like the community compost?
Right. So when the tree dump was open, it would be with that too.
Right. I would need to understand that more, but I mean, I knew that. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so you got me up?
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Lenell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve the reservation for sending three new public safety officers to the police academy?
So.
Support. Chief Kip?
Currently, we're processing hiring three public safety officers to fill positions that we have that are vacant currently. We've extended additional offlane planning to two women and one man. The gentleman is not returned our contact to him. So right now, I'm probably saying he's chose not to accept the job here. And so we'll be looking for a person this time. It might result in, if they don't pass all the tests and everything else, it could result in not making any. And if that's the case, hopefully they'd still be interested in attending the academy that starts in the fall next. The two women, one is an Albion city resident and the other one is an Albion college graduate, or Albion college student who's going to graduate.
So we are, we're going to, there's the three, but we're going to, we're having two, right?
I, I'm hoping. We do have all the people that we've interviewed and so I just haven't gotten with the time whether they have on campus or not, that we can be interested in sending. So we could have it on the first couple of lists that we might choose from. So, so we may have three, but we are not finding anybody with a certification. So my guess is I'm going to have to send three people to the academy this year at some point, so.
Mayor, for Congress?
Yes, question. Are any of the people undercover?
That's a question we can't ask.
Okay. The next question. Do we have any type of situations that we take this amount, that they stay with the?
The state of Michigan, there, there was a court ruling that we can no longer require that. We used to have a further requirement and there's a, there's been a court ruling that states can't require people to stay with you. So there's nothing we can do about that. So far, we've been very lucky with that. I've only lost one person on the census of this academy and she stayed here for two years, but left to go to Iowa with her boyfriend, so.
Well, you answered the other two questions without even that, so.
Yes, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mayor Snyder. So you mentioned that this is in August. When will we start going to the police force?
So the, the first academy starts May 10th. So that academy would end in September, which means they would start their field training at that point, which is about six months of field training with other officer. And then during that time, they would also send a, attend an academy higher academy, which starts in October, so.
What, what's in August? Did you mention August?
There's another police academy that starts in August. So if for some reason they can't pass the state qualifications to get into this academy, it's possible if I can keep them interested, that we could possibly get them to an academy in August. There are not many candidates for law enforcement positions right now. So I try as hard as I can to get what's available to get, so.
Councilwoman.
So I understand we can't ask the, the ethnicity of a person, but can we ask a question? Does, something was posed to me about how police people are hired and do they match the, the population of the city? So does our police force match the population of the city as far as current people moving forward?
It does not. And we've had a very difficult time finding minority candidates to even apply for the job, so.
Thank you.
I, and I have offered jobs to four different minority candidates, all of which either didn't pass the test recorded by the state or chose to turn the job down, so.
Councilwoman Williamson?
I was just going to ask it.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Let's ask Chief Kip. It sounds like the officers is a lot to be dealt right now on their force. Has it been, like, what's the, what's the environment right now for public safety with, with being down that many officers?
Well, the reality of it is, is we've been down six officers for most of the last year. And so being down just three is not so bad. We just, one of our officers that we hired back in October just finished his field training, started out this week. We've got two more that will be out of field training within the next two to three weeks probably. And so that'll get us back up to having only down three people on the road. So that'll make it much easier at that point. We also have four people who should be graduating from our academy this month as well, which will bring our fire burning capabilities back up as well, so.
Uh, do you have a comment?
I was just going to say, by counseling all the hiring decisions that are made in the Public Safety Department are, are made regardless of gender. gender, ethnicity, race, sexual orientation as required by law. So there, hiring practices is, I, I should say, for the entire city are, are uh, blind to all those characteristics as, as are required to be, we hire the best candidates. I mean, obviously, we always strive for diversity in, in race and gender and, and other categories, but, uh, we hire the best candidates regardless of, of their personal characteristics. And so I just want council to be very careful about questions that they, that they ask. And I know no one's, you know, uh, there, there's no malicious intent for any of these questions, but, you know, we just have to be careful that when we, uh, go down that road, if someone's not hired, they could come back and say, well, you know, I'll be, and didn't hire me because I was female or because I was a minority, something like that. So.
Mayor Duncan Jackson?
Um, I thank you for giving that information out, Colleen, but it's good that we do say certain things that maybe you cannot do on these YouTube videos so that people that are asking these questions, when they go back in here, you can also let them know at the same time that we have addressed their questions. You've given the proper and the correct answer far as legal ways that you guys have to hire. Some of us already know that without even telling them, but I believe sometimes it's good for them to know that our own city hall does know what we're doing. So I thank you for that information.
Councilwoman Williamson?
I was going to speak to you. I, I mean, I've been at council now for, you know, two years, almost three years. Um, I've known for a long time, he asked about ethnicity when it was hiring. Um, however, when it comes to recruitment and, um, trying to attract candidates, that's a different, that's a different scenario. And I would encourage the city attorney and others who help us with this to help us create plans. And I know, and I know, and this is not a chief of public safety, this is just in general for council members to know that, uh, we can take action in recruiting and making sure that we're attracting the candidates we hope to get on the force that are represented by the community. I understand that once we're into the hiring process, it may be such a completely different scenario. We can, and the recruitment efforts do, we can to make sure that we're recruiting minority of officers. So, uh, I do, I do want to thank Chief Kip for doing that. I know that is, I know that the recruitment task, we're always trying to get all of the, the best candidates. So I appreciate that. But also.
And I can tell you too, we did a little different this time. Um, normally, we advertise this on the Michigan Division of Law enforcement standards page because that's where these officers would go to look for jobs. Um, and then our, our public safety Facebook page, our main location, we do this. This, this time, we actually put an ad out on Indeed. Um, and we got, uh, I believe sixty-seven people who had interest in the job back.
That's it.
Um, but then we requested all those people fill out application, city applications. We got very few applications back. I thought we might have some really good minority candidates in that first and then, uh, we didn't see applications. So. Um, but it, it, it was, all sixty-seven of those people had no law enforcement experience. So they, you know, we're not, that gave us a, a way to get to people that maybe not be interested in it, but, uh, again, it didn't really pan out as hard as we hoped before with the candidates.
So good job. Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Blake?
So, um, this is a question that's a lot, for me, I understand, um, because I don't know if this is happening or not. I know that, uh, a lot of the, um, like, maybe Air Force Marines, they have to get, is that criteria close to the same as police officers?
So currently in the state, and I, I think you mentioned, sorry, from what you said, it not coming out, but, um, currently, the state of Michigan has a program that if you were in the military, you served as a military police officer in any of the branches, you can go through a, a shortened academy. It's only six weeks instead of a full eighteen weeks, um, which is really helpful. And the one candidate that I haven't heard back from was a military police officer. Uh, he lives in Grand Rapids and I thought he was very interested, but, um, he, he would have to go through the full academy because he, uh, was discharged in two thousand and thirteen and has to be within five years of your discharge. So, um, there are opportunities like that. Um, but, uh, again, it doesn't work out that great. We had another gentleman that had been in the military who we were all excited about and he couldn't pass the state recorded test, uh, to become a police officer. We had no control over that and, and so he tweeted that higher name either.
So is there any other more you'd emphasize for your helping?
Um, generally, I advertise it a little different because we're one of the few departments that actually sends people to the academy. And so when I put that out there, I emphasize that we'll pay for both academies, which tends to draw in a few more people than you normally get. Um, but, um, that's, I mean, you have to be kind of generic in that. So.
Councilwoman Leno?
Thank you, Mayor Jackson. Uh, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understand correctly. You said we cannot screen for any of the, of the Albion large saying, you know, discriminatory potential offenses. So can we not know anybody's race, gender, et cetera, when we're reading applications?
No, we do, but we, we don't, we don't use those characteristics, whether it's gender or ethnicity or race, as, um,
qualifies.
As qualifiers, but we, we, we don't give preferential treatment to any of those protected classes. We, we screen the candidates to see who's the most qualified and hire them regardless of those characteristics.
Thank you.
And I don't believe our applications have race as an op, as an option. So I have no idea what race or diversity is until we get interviews.
Any other questions? All right, so you got the makeup?
Councilmember Leno?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed? Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And there's Sam.
Yes.
Motion approved for the reservation for the merge of contribution plan, adoption agreement.
Sold.
Mayor. Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. So it goes to where the previous city manager, he had made to exempt himself out of the city's murders to find, um, to find contribution plan and to continue with the ICV retirement. Um, so they made the modification to exempt the city manager position from that plan. Uh, my contract we negotiated to, um, allow me to remain within that plan. So we're just looking to make that modification to, um, add the city manager position back into the city's E C plan. Any questions for City Manager, Mayor? Yep, City Director?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed? Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
And there's Sam.
Yes.
Discussion on the Hound Park funding for equipment.
Councilwoman Reed? I, I bet you take it off for next time. I've got a few more folks to come in. And, uh, for me and, um, you.
Councilman Williamson?
I was just going to, it's, we're going to do this the next time. Could the city manager possibly provide us the budget for the park as well? Uh, this is in the way we're at.
We have it. Great. Okay, so then we need to have a motion to, uh, remove this from the agenda since it wasn't done at the beginning?
Probably just table it.
Yeah, just table it. Okay. We're going to table it for, yes, that whole. Okay.
Move to table.
Move to. Wait, I have a second.
Second.
So you got the makeup?
Councilmember Clark? Reed? Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And there's Sam.
Yes.
So I believe we're at our three in here before? No, you, no, sorry. Yes, you turned it on, I guess. Yes, Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, is there an update on the, um, the appointment of Mr. Mahal? Um, I have been in communication with him and he has decided not to pursue this position of E C.
Yes, Councilwoman Reed?
We have an update on the Albion versus plan and just like overall understanding of considering the economic development, uh, from, I mean, I think all of the parties that are involved as many people that are willing to, to share all of that. So I think we can all have greater, I do receive, uh, pretty upset phone call about our decision last time. So I just want to have that shared understanding.
And we received all, um, dates that all of the members of this committee were available. So please, now, I'm here, you know, you should receive a, do a survey on determining a time to hold this study session, to have that conversation. Yes, Councilwoman, just a question for, um, City Manager.
So we had, um, I had requested that, um, I had requested that, um, the, that they come to this meeting to update my back to determine, you have a projected time when they will be ready to come to them?
She just, yeah, she just got back from New England today and with a few dates, um, that they're available to meet with me just to discuss some of the properties. But she said she will send, um, just an overview of, or will email out to everyone. But that is, I would provide you with that date as.
So she's not going to come yet? She, I thought not. Because I requested that she can, you know, present.
Present on it or do you just ask for an update on all of them? Okay, yeah, I think she provided the dates this morning and I will reach out to confirm and see if she's available to come at the next, this next meeting.
Yes, Mayor Duncan Jackson?
How was I, um, constantly collecting, kind of, the agreement? So, um, can you put on about, on the trees? Any affect of, any more tree removal or any other plan? Because we have some trees out there that state of our, so they, and then we'll fill it. Some type of update on that needs to be filed in the last two weeks.
Yeah, I should, but I just wanted to add that we have reached about the budget for tree removal. Um, since COVID, we were already behind and now that we are reactive with the new tree vendor, we have gone through that budget quite quickly. Um, we are not even halfway through the year yet. So I will provide you with an update on that now. Maybe you'll just provide you a budget amendment to allow for more funds to be able to do more trees for us.
Any other future agenda items? Okay. Okay. Uh, comment? So can we have anybody on?
Um, I believe you have one individual, um, from Albion College. If we can, uh, have you state your name and your address, please?
Um, my name is Brielle Ford. Stand Wesley Hall. Albion College.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so my, um, request or I'm bringing forth an idea of our Albion Day. This is supposed to be a holiday, an annual holiday to, um, exercise the strengths of Albion City. Would be activities such as color runs and, um, uh, food competitions and things of that sort to, and the main focus would be supporting the, um, downtown Albion businesses and also citizens who stand Albion and college students to go down and set up to sell their small, the, advertise their small businesses and then the city could come out and walk around and support the businesses. It would be just to strengthen unity and, um, exercise the strengths of the city. Basically. A short rundown. I was wondering if, um, that would be possible. I, I would like it to be held downtown. Um, and I was speaking to Chris Harris about, um, merging it with Walk the Beat. I was just wondering, would it be possible if it can be held downtown?
So I'm sorry, it's very difficult to understand what you're saying. I'm not sure if it's your audio, maybe where you're located, but you're just not coming through very clear to us.
I'm sorry. Uh, maybe I can point to my phone.
You have a suggestion? So I know that she wants to get approval from council to join with Walk the Beat to have some type of Albion Day event about the downtown and potentially other vendors and whatnot from my understanding. What I assume she's proposing right now. Does that sound correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so are you looking at possibly having this done next year?
Yes.
Okay, well, we will definitely take that into consideration. Now, is there a specific group that you work with?
One more time, please. You said it again?
Yes, is there a specific college group that you work with?
Um, that, yeah, I'm in the Ford Institute.
Okay, so it would be the Ford Institute wanting to collaborate?
Yes.
Do you have any notice? Thank you so much.
Thank you for listening.
Is there anybody else? Um, not that I can see at this time.
Okay. All right, so we're onto our, uh, to the report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A copy of my report was included in the packet as well as sending up an update out earlier this afternoon. Just want to note that, um, we completed the fiscal year audit last Wednesday. Our auditors did everything that they needed on the site. They are just waiting for, um, additional information on our action variable regarding our pension funds. So once they have that, they will be back to present the final findings. Um, we discussed, they may back in the process of getting some schedule. We will make sure that they're here at the, um, May meeting. My, um, I apologize that I was only questioning just one of the, a list. I didn't know you weren't the person, but I will make sure that that happens next meeting. Um, Albion Mynta programs, just wanted to highlight that their premium fitness classes added to the schedule. And from the update that I received this morning, the classes have been opt-in success. They, um, welcomed twenty new, um, participants last week. A total of seventy participants. So that is, um, very exciting. And when speaking with, um, Ms. Heim, they are working to have the interviews for the recreation yard manager position this week. So I would be updated once that, um, position has been filled. Just a reminder to everyone, we have the May fourth special election coming up. And with that, um, for the recreation millage renewal, um, this will be on Tuesday, May fourth. Um, so for the renewal of the current, um, recreation knowledge, the ballot name would just renew, um, a levy of two mills for three years. Um, for the continued operation of the recreation program. So this will be for, um, this will be years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. Um, for the first year, the tax levy will, um, raise an estimated revenue of a hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. So just encouraging, um, everyone within our community to get out on Tuesday, May fourth and, um, vote on the, um, millage renewal. Just an update on the M I O T guidelines. So they have extended the current emergency rules for an additional six months and are encouraging remote work, um, when it is feasible. So city administration, we're reviewing all of our current positions and we will be making sure that we remain compliant with all of the emergency rules. Um, also, the M D H H S gatherings and mask order was recently extended through May twenty-fourth. So just remember to, um, continue to social distance where your mask can limit the gatherings inside. Good news, I heard, received a call from M G A this afternoon. So they have developed a few alternative, um, plans to the reconfiguration of Mission Gap. They would like to come before council to present those proposals. Um, so it looks like they will be here within, probably even the first or second May meeting. They're just looking to finalize those new plans. And so that's very exciting that they are listening to all the feedback that they receive from residents. So please expect to see them here within the next twenty weeks. Um, our shark spots, the shark spot currently in City Hall is currently full. Um, however, we just received word, actually received in the mail today, they have sent us, um, more boxes to utilize. The county is in the process of finalizing the contract with the vendor who is responsible for hauling off all of the waste materials. So we do have an additional box if you have, um, sharks material that you would like to dispose of. Um, and done in the category of grant application. So city administration is working with excitement to submit, um, a category grant application to pulverize and resurface West Dairy Street from South Albion to South Superior Street. Um, this program will pay eighty percent of the related construction costs with a maximum grant amount of, um, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The current estimate for the project is four hundred and eighty-three thousand. So it looks like the bulk of that work will be covered by grant funds if we are selected for that program. Um, the application is due May third. So we are working to get everything completed. We will not be notified until December. Um, and this will not be until twenty twenty-three, um, reconstruction. And just a reminder, the watershed. And just a reminder, for water shutouts, we'll resume on May twelfth, so if you're needing to set payment arrangements, please contact Lindsay within our utility building to get those arrangements set up. Any questions? Any questions for city manager, Mayor?
Last week, which one was that? Which one was that?
It would be, um, sorry, where did I go? Um, West Berry Street from South Albian Street up to South Superior. And this grant only applies to roadways with diversion traffic, so that's why we selected that area. Any other questions or comments? All right, um, councilwoman. I'm putting in this, I think this is the first. Councilwoman. No, so I think I want to generate, uh, but, um, city manager said it kind of touched on the Y M C A programming. Um, it, it is great to see so many people take part, make a bit of this plastic that are being offered. I know that, um, Mrs. Hyde is looking towards, um, youth programming, um, and so looking at the summertime, you know, outdoors to provide these type of opportunities, when you're a plus of ass. I see adult stuff going on, um, yes, tougher kids is also in the pipeline, so just be patient and ensure they will get that posted as soon as they're able to pull things together. All right. Um, motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Thank you, uh. Albian City for the next day. Hound Park and June.
June, you're the one. All right, so we got a motion and a second. You got to make up?
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Linel.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Marson.
Yes, you adjourn at eight fifteen P O.